Meeting. Okay, we already have an executive on and we need to add one for employee eval and attorney-client issue.
Recording in progress.
Does anybody else have any, any, does it need for executives?
I'd like to motion during this session. For those purposes.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any need to amend the agenda? I don't think so.
Move to accept agenda as presented. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anything on the meeting minutes of March 15? I saw nothing.
Fine.
On the last meeting?
Yeah.
I would have some of this. Didn't you zoom in? You zoomed in at the last meeting, didn't you?
That's the last one.
Well, that's where you asked. Last way.
After the special meeting.
Got you, got you.
How many I would have.
That's great.
See where getting a study going or maybe just coming away on the water system about $3,700. So what am I gonna, what is that, what are we gonna achieve from that or what's that?
What number is that, Joe?
Oh. 2185.
What was it again?
2185. Otter Creek Engineering.
Oh, I think that's something we're still paying for, something that hydraulic study?
So, so we had to start doing that, the lead study.
Oh, that's what this is for.
So, yeah, and we did, there was a grant that we've done for that, so there was a little match went in, but they've started that already.
Connected to that lead?
Yeah.
Okay. Guess I didn't realize it.
Is that why I have a blue circle on my front lawn? Where my water?
Probably for your shut off.
Paid the bill, I swear. Anything, other questions on the orders?
Just one, I'm guessing all those checks that were written in cargo for salt were just written on the same day? Both weren't received bills on the same day?
Yeah, there were a bunch of invoices for salt delivery, so that's an invoice per delivery.
So it's just, that was in a check for sure, it's not really.
Right.
Yeah.
Probably the last will buy this.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
That's all I got.
Time to lock this on there.
All right, town managers report?
Okay, I noticed there's a bunch of attachments to my report, so we put financials in, things to look at.
Yeah.
And actually a copy of that letter that I was just talking about for the, for the lead and copper rule that's federal mandated now.
Yeah.
And then the, the official letter on our equalization that we talked about at the last meeting, so I'm sure you'll be able to see that. So, last few weeks, submitted a V-Trans Class II Highway Grant application for Sherman Overlay on Whipple Hall Road. West Rutland's doing a section of that too, so hopefully the state sees that and we get. And actually the footage I had on there was wrong, it's more like 10,000 feet, not sure how I came up with 2,600. Also be submitted a Class II Grant Structures to replace a culvert at Oxbow and Asia Road, and I actually got the quote from camp today on that, so we'll get that submitted and see what happens. Jen and I met with Lyle Jebson and Tyler Richardson from the Chamber in Economic Development of Rutland Region on March 23 to discuss the need to bring businesses to Pittsburgh, especially along Route 7 corridor. And we did discuss the Segment 2 project and how to sell the village improvements to attract future business, so opened a few doors for Jen, and we're gonna have a meeting with Bar Harbor to discuss revolving loan stuff that goes through Cedar that they like to do with local banks, so hopefully we'll have more to come on that. Ann and I have been reviewing, updating, and drafting policies for the board for discussion and eventually approval. The first set of policies that we have here tonight are to cover most of our financial areas, and we've been using VLCT's approved templates in creating these policies, and I've reached out to Jill, Jill Muir at VLCT for some guidance on this, so we're gonna try to get them all done here, maybe in a month or so. V-Trans had awarded a $48,000 grant for the Tri-Town Trail Scoping Study, and we're looking forward to working with Procter and West Rutland on that giant effort. The town received its annual municipal roads general permit that covers stormwater discharge from our roads. That permit allows us to get grants and aid and better roads money, so we'll be talking to V-Trans about that. It's not done by the RPC anymore, which is kind of a bummer, but Chad and I were talking about it today, and we have a, a meeting on May 3 with the state down at RPC that I'll be attending for that too. Attended the Rutland Regional Tag meeting on March 29. There was a presentation on municipal roads general permits and the grants and aid program, and also heard a presentation on a new program called Everybody Rides, which I brought some brochures to Helen, it's a pretty good program for folks that need transportation, so. Chad has reached out to Daniel's Construction to get an estimate for the recommended repairs and maintenance on the Kendall Hill Road Bridge that were listed and the May 22 V-Trans Bridge Inspection. And letters were sent out to our water users notifying them of the upcoming lead and copper survey that Otter Creek Engineering will be completing this year. It's a new federal program that's required for every public water supply system nationwide. That's all I have for this evening.
Any other questions? Thank you. All right, any select board member remarks this evening? None? Any public comment? Assuming everyone's on the agenda. Okay, let's, we'll finish up, we have one old business item, special appropriations.
So, you know, we had received some calls from some of the, the folks or, what do you call them, the businesses that apply for appropriations every year that, you know, the townspeople vote on, that there was some confusion or whatever, that some of these were cut in half.
Hmm.
So we had quite a few calls on that, and I wasn't here during budget season, so it was a little learning for me on this. Did consult with the league, which there's a little frequently asked questions about the voter-backed petitions, and another, one of the policies that Ann and I started working on was the special appropriations policy. So, the thing with appropriations when it comes from like, you know, I'm just looking at the list, like the parent child, Rutland County Parent Child Center, or those folks, when they, when they get a petition and they have enough registered voters to file that petition, that's, it has to sit like that with a dollar amount on it, there's no, and it actually has to be voted on separately from everything else, but if you look at, you know, how they write them, the first thing says, "Shall the voters of whatever town." So, it's, it's not, you know, it's, it's solely on the voters in town to support or not support those. I think when we move forward with like next year for town meeting and the warning that those all should be listed separately, so everyone has an opportunity to vote on them. But with that said, some of these that were cut in half, I did speak with our town attorney about this a little bit too, and the recommendation is that we make those whole this year, and then do, have everyone file new petitions for this next coming season, and you know, we could pull it out for three years if they don't want to change, or two years, or however the board sees they want to do it, but yeah, we should really get some sort of process here for, you know, filing petitions so that people know and have a timeframe on it.
Okay.
It's all different with towns and what their, some, some do want petitions every year, some say three unless they change the dollar amount, and then they have to re-petition for it, so, but there is a, there is a draft policy in here tonight, if you're folks want to look at it and see, you know, if that works, and we can move forward with that, but the difference in the dollar amount for making these whole is $12,238, so, which we found a $25,000 error to our advantage of the budget already, so, you know, it's there, and I think it would be a good faith effort to make these whole, and then we can send a letter out to everyone.
I'd make a motion.
Can we wait, please, can I ask a couple questions before we do a motion, if that's okay, Tom?
Sure.
How many of these have up-to-date petitions filed, Liz?
That's the mystery question.
Not recently.
Yeah, not a lot of them, I think.
Once they're in, it's always been the past.
Right.
Once they're voted at the floor, no time to.
Unless they want to change.
They're rather until it gets changed.
Unless they want to change the dollar amount.
Exactly.
Several years ago, they voted that on the floor of town meeting.
Yes, that's what I recall.
Yeah. So. It might be worth having them do something every few years though, just so it keeps them.
That's what I'm saying, yeah. Every year.
Yeah, because, you know, if someone, if one of these entities stops doing business, you know, we need to know that, I think having something where.
I want to believe that's what spurred this, was one of those, one of them was, they were sending a check to appeal box.
Yeah.
And we Googled the organization, nothing was coming up.
Want to make sure we have validity in what we're funding.
And, you know, they, I think most of these, these places will send a little, a little blurb of what they do and what they've done in town through the year that can go in the town report, so at least there's a little introduction. I know it probably could take a little longer at town meeting, but.
Yeah.
You know, it really is the voters' decision on those items, so when it turns into an appropriation, because technically it's not part of our general fund, our general budget.
So did you say you're working on a new suggestion for how we handle this?
Well, it'd be for the board to come up with, like, how you want, if you wanted them to petition every year, every three years, I think this year, absolutely, everyone needs to do it, and then determine after that.
Okay, sorry, Tom.
Well, I would, excuse me, that we reinstated these funding for, for level issue, and in the motion I also would say we need to review that policy for next year.
So, there is a draft policy in your packet tonight, if you wanted to look at it and to make changes or not.
Okay.
And this is one of the other ones that was recommended by the league to use too, which is nice because their legal's already, you know, reviewed these and done over them, so.
Right.
And I know there's a lot of policies in here for approval or review or, you know, I mean, it would be nice to get some of them approved, but I understand that, you know, you guys might want to take some time to read them and highlight them and mark them up.
Yeah.
I don't know tonight, so.
Yeah, no, we need time to go through.
Yeah. So do we have a second on that motion?
I'll say, Ann.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yep.
Okay.
Matter of principle.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yep.
All right, new business, Outback Acres Solar Presentation, I'm guessing all of you people.
That'd be my guess.
Yeah, no familiar basis, anything?
Christine, you want to introduce folks?
Yep, I was just gonna do this screen share, see if this works. We have some copies due, if it's easier for you to see. All right, I will go ahead and get started. Hello, everyone, I am Christine Heffernan from Nextera Energy Resources, and I'm going to be providing an overview of the Outback Acres Solar Project tonight. We've got some folks in person, we're also part of the team, so if we can just go down the line quickly and introduce ourselves and say where you're coming from, what your area of expertise is.
Mike Willard, VHB, is the expert.
I'm Wilcox, I'm in-house attorney that works with DJ Outback Acres.
I'm Nancy Monkis, I'm a lawyer with Amsterdam-Ackland Martin in Vermont, and I'm here from West Fairly.
Adam Querry with VHB out of our South Burlington office, specializing in natural resources assessments.
Excellent, and then we've got Andrew on Zoom, who is also from VHB, is an engineering expert who has helped out as well.
Hey, everybody.
Aye. Okay.
So, we're gonna go over a bit about our company, Nextera, and the company's past work in the state of Vermont. We'll do an overview of the project itself, its location, we'll talk through the surveys, the studies that have been done so far, the permits that have been obtained, we'll touch on the project's visibility, and then look at the benefits of solar energy to the local community. So, the applicant, Fiji Outback Solar, Outback Acres Solar LLC is a subsidiary of Nextera Energy Resources, also referred to as NEAR throughout this presentation, and has one of the first companies to invest in renewable energy over 30 years ago. NEAR's parent company, Nextera Energy, Inc., is actually now the world's largest producer of renewable energy. And the company and its affiliates have energy new facilities across 38 states and Canada currently, and they are operating over 20,000 megawatts of renewable energy, so that is, as a point of reference, enough energy to power over 9 billion homes. Nextera does have some prior experience here in Vermont. In December of 2018, we commissioned the 19.6 megawatt ground-mounted Coolidge Solar Project in Windsor County. As a side note, ground-mounted is exactly what it sounds like, its panels installed at the ground level as opposed to something like a rooftop solar system. So, at the time, it was Nextera's first project in the state, and it was the largest solar project here in Vermont, and it has been operational since then. In addition, Nextera currently has seven distributed generation solar projects in development in Vermont, including, but only to the Adams Road Solar Project in Rutland County, the Ethan Allen Solar Project in Franklin County, and this project, the Outback Acres, also in this county. And a NEAR affiliate plans to install, own, and operate these projects. Regarding location, the Outback Acres project is slated to be built at 474 Furnace Road, which is not too far from here, it's about a half mile north of where US Route 7 and Furnace Road intersect. The project size is 3.5 megawatts, and while the team examined about 70 prospective acres, the project will utilize approximately 18 acres total. I don't know if you can totally see it on this screen here, but the layout does show three groups or pods of panels, so top left, top right, and then bottom shorter triangle. These panels are all to be single-axis tracker solar panels, that means they move to keep tilted towards the sun as the sun's position changes throughout the day. That is to optimize the solar energy capture and the power generated. Another side note as just background, there are other kinds of solar panels such as fixed solar panels, they don't move, they're stationary, and dual-axis tracker panels which move in multiple directions on two axes. For this particular project, single-axis tracker made the more sense. And construction of this electric generation project is subject to permitting, most notably a CPG or a Certificate of Public Good, and a regulation by the State of Vermont Public Utility Commission under Vermont statute Title 30, Section 248. So, several surveys and studies have been completed so far. The utility Green Mountain Power, or GMP, conducted both visibility and facility studies, which confirm that interconnection would be possible. A Phase 1 environmental site assessment, otherwise known as an ESA, was also conducted, and that's to assess if current and historical property use had affected the soil or the groundwater and could pose a threat to the environment or human health. Natural resources criteria, including wetlands, were surveyed as well. Again, hard to see on here, but there is, there are small groups of solid green areas, those are all denoting wetlands, and our project is designed to avoid all the wetlands and is adhering to the state wetland regulations for activities and buffers. A historic resources review was also conducted, and no impacts to known cultural resources were identified. Among the remaining lists there of the surveys and studies that have been done, the ALTA survey, the Geotechnical Study, only a grassland bird survey found impacts to habitat, and we had proposed a mitigation strategy accordingly. So, now to move on to permits. A construction stormwater permit was approved by the Vermont Department of Environmental Conservation last month, and an access right-of-way permit was approved by the town in January of this year, and then our wetland permit application has been submitted to the Agency of Natural Resources, A. Regarding visibility, a visual impact assessment was conducted, and it was determined that the project site has overall limited visibility for the majority of Pittsburgh residents. The main visibility noted in the assessment was for one northern abutting parcel and a stretch of Furnace Road. So, proposed vegetative buffers were included in the site plans already submitted to the PUC as part of the Certificate of Public Good application, and those will minimize visibility for cars driving along that stretch of Furnace Road and the one northern abutting as of these. We do want to note that after the visual impact assessment was conducted, some trees ended up being removed on another abutter's property to the south of the project, which did unfortunately change the visibility where there had been none before, so we've been in touch with these landowners of that property, and we're looking into potential mitigation options there. Then, the closest points of each side of the proposed solar array are as follows, from the eastern side, about 1,300 feet, which is roughly a quarter of a mile from Adams Road, from the southern side, it's a similar distance, just shy of a quarter of a mile from Oxbow Road, and just over a quarter mile from US Route 7, and then from the west and the north, almost 900 feet each, which is just about .17 miles from Furnace Road. And it is important to note that the area surrounding the project does consist of agricultural fields, forested lands, and low-density residential development, all of which are factors that help minimize general visibility. So, in terms of solar project benefits to the local community, there are several. First and foremost, jobs will be created during project construction, we try to hire local as much as possible, and anytime folks working on projects who are not local will come to town, they are paying to stay in local hotels, eat at local restaurants, et cetera, so there are financial benefits to the local economy either way. Even more notably, we will be paying property taxes which extend far beyond deconstruction period and get paid as long as the project exists. Solar energy also helps diversify the region's electricity generation mix, which helps reduce reliance on natural gas and other fuels. Generating renewable energy additionally contributes to the state of Vermont's renewable energy goals to lessen impacts on the environment. And this kind of project allows the land to be returned to its previous agricultural use at the end of the project. The project will not increase traffic, and there'll be little to no demand on municipal infrastructure services, and this really preserves the area's rural character, keeping a low visual profile. And then finally, solar energy is safe and clean, is pollution-free, and will not endanger public health or safety. So with that, I will turn it over, any questions you may?
What about the pollution impact when you have to recycle or dispose of the panels when they're at the end of their lifespan?
That's a great question. Do we have a local policy for that, or to our environmental specials? No.
Yeah, I, I think we'd have to get back to you on that.
Where is this, where do they dispose?
No, not that green.
It is a good question, I think it varies depending on the project, because we have projects in so many different parts of the country, so we can definitely, we're gonna try and get back to you on that.
And it's part of the PUC process too, the company did submit both decommissioning fund, letter of credit information, and requirements to dispose, to file a plan to dispose of and decommission the project and put it back to the original state at the end of the project's life, which is about 25 to 30 years. And that's part of the state requirements with decommissioning information that PUC has to approve.
Is that done in the form of a bond?
A letter of credit.
Letter of credit. Not a bond.
It's a letter of credit.
So if they just, if they disappear, there's nowhere to, nowhere to get it.
No, the letter of credit is deposited with the Public Utility Commission and the state, who has the ability, it's their form that has to be issued by an acceptable bank that gives, regardless of what happens to the company, the PUC will have the right to access that letter of credit. It is, it is an irrevocable letter of credit, and it's a requirement of the Public Utility Commission.
Yeah, I'm familiar with that, but most places now over in New York State are starting to ask for bonds because of solar companies going.
Dipping out.
Dipping out or going upside down, and there is no monies to cover, that's why I'm asking. What if it was a letter of credit if they've gone bankrupt and the money's all gone?
No, the, the letter of credit has been issued by the bank, and, and the PUC can directly access that, those funds from the irrevocable letter of credit, regardless of whether a company is bankrupt or not.
Draw from the bank.
Yes.
What happens, as we know lately, what happens if the bank moves?
That can even.
Well, okay, no, and, yeah, and given the events of the last few weeks, yeah, yeah.
How tall are the, how tall are those panels gonna be when they're standing straight up? Like, what's the, what's the height of them?
Do we know, it's a site layout, remember off the top of your head?
I don't.
Is Andrew?
Maybe.
Andrew, do you have that?
I can look it up real quick here, just give me a second, yeah.
Well, they just, they just pivot on access, right? So, in the morning they're like this, in the afternoon they've pivoted, so, yeah.
And so is there gonna be glare to the people that are up on Adams and Oxbow when they're tilted at a certain angle?
They're non-reflective panels.
Okay. Joe?
Have the adjoining landowners to this area, have they been, had a chance to weigh in on this, being informed as to what's proposed? Or is it maybe too early in this age for that to have happened? Or will it happen?
They've been notified, and they are notified when the project is, when the petition was filed in Vermont, and had, and if they wanted a full set of information, they're entitled to that, some ask for it, some don't, and the company representatives have specifically been there and met with adjoining landowners and had questions. So they, it's an ongoing process, but there had been direct discussion.
Well, yeah, and given the events of the last few weeks, yeah.
How tall are those panels going to be when they're standing straight up? Like, what's the height of them?
Do we know? Site layout, remember off the top of your head.
I don't. Is Andrew?
Maybe.
Andrew, do you have that?
I can look it up real quick here, just give me a second, yeah.
Well, they just pivot on access, right? So in the morning, they're like this, in the afternoon, they've pivoted, so, yeah.
And so is there going to be glare to the people that are up on Adams and Oxbo when they're tilted at a certain angle?
They're non-reflective panels.
Okay. Joe?
Have the adjoining landowners to this area, have they been, had a chance to weigh in on this, being informed as to what's proposed? Or is it maybe too early in the stage for that to have happened? Or will it happen?
They've been notified, and they are notified when the project is, when the petition was filed in Vermont, and had, and if they wanted a full set of information, they're entitled to that, some ask for it, some don't. And the company representatives have specifically been there and met with adjoining landowners and had questions. So they, it's an ongoing process, but there have been direct discussions and opportunities to discuss with adjoining landlords.
And they've also requested a public hearing and a site visit, which is scheduled for next week, November eleventh.
Has that taken place yet?
That's coming up next week.
Because for me, I'd like to have a little information just to help the adjoining landlords, what their feelings are.
When was the site visit?
It's about 2:00 PM, I believe, but it will be on, we can send you the notice if you want it.
Sure.
Mr. Attikin, can we send that to you?
Sure. I requested party status, which is a while back, and I just put in municipality, so I think we'll probably get the notices in.
Well, hopefully, after that first hearing, I, as the chair, I didn't get it till the day after the hearing. So it'd be nice to get that, and I know that one of the adjoining landlords called me this evening, she didn't get it until after the hearing. Chair of the planning commission didn't get it till after that first hearing, so, which was around, like, over Valentine's Day, right?
So the Public Utility Commission sends that out directly to the address that, they have the address of?
They went to all the right addresses, just too late.
Wow.
So timing.
And that was for the earlier project?
Yeah, for, yeah, whatever that first hearing was, I didn't get it till after the project. So, yeah. No, for this, did you say for the Adams Road project?
Yeah.
No, it's for this one.
This one, okay.
So the commission clerk sends those out, we just, we give them the addresses, and there's also, it's always then on the PUC website as well, you know, under the case book, we'll send, I'll forward the notice from the PUC that went out about the site visit. Sure.
And so I'm trying, this is really hard to read, so I'm trying to figure, because I actually live on Furnace, and I have a hard time believing this is not to be visible from, like, all kinds of places, so you're going to have to show me, explain to me, like, where, you know, and how people on Adams and Oxbo aren't going to have that right in their face, like, I just don't see, I can't see how there's not affecting a ton of people, actually. That is a wide-open space there.
So Viewshed modeling was done, as well as sort of field investigation, and so our purview is to sort of do it from publicly, public access advantage points, we can't go onto private residences' properties. So basically, it's local roads, any, like, sort of conserved lands, that sort of thing. Generally speaking, what the Viewshed modeling was showing is that, so, you know, Furnace Road is sort of coming up here in the north-south direction, sort of turns east-west, and then it sort of bends back and heads northeast. So there was, the most visibility of the project was shown within this stretch here, which makes sense, because this is sort of a wide-open foreground of, you know, ag field that's in the front, so there's nothing, there's no visual mitigation that's there today. So the greatest visibility of the project was from here, so there's a sense of landscape mitigation that's been proposed along this northern border of the arrays that was addressing the Carreras' concerns about their visibility from their parcel, as well as addressing views of the public as they travel along Furnace Road. There was a couple glimpses that were identified as possible through intervening structures, and this is all sort of wooded here, and then there's sort of woods here, so to address potential visibility from the northern part of Furnace Road on the southern approach, landscape mitigation was installed across the entire northern corner of this parcel here to sort of address that. And then coming in Furnace Road here, so coming in, I'm getting the name of the road right here.
Is that Riddle Park?
Yeah, exactly, Riddle Park, thank you. So some visibility was addressed, shown here, and through this section, of course, then it turns into private property, so the public road parts sort of stop in here. So anyway, we've shown landscape mitigation along this sort of southwestern border of the project, again, to mitigate potential views from these private residences, because there are some vegetation and sort of land form here, the land sort of rises.
That has been where most of those trees were cut down very recently, that are in the last couple of years, though.
Actually, the ones that were cut were actually right, right here.
Is that the Pelkey's property of the, is that where that end is coming?
The ones that Christine had mentioned earlier is off the Billings property to the south. So there's a wetland feature, class-two wetland that comes through, and there's vegetated buffers that exist, and so the project is proposed outside of all wetlands and wetland buffers, and so that wetland feature does go onto the property, and they have clearcut the whole area, so it's now wide open, so we have met with Billings and Carreras in discussion about how to address their potential concerns.
So is that down in a dip enough where you wouldn't see it from Route 7?
Yes, there was no, just big visibility from Route 7. And then, of course, on the eastern side here, the topography climbs really steep, and there's sort of dense vegetated buffer that's along this leading edge. There may be, like, one of the residences that have cleared any trees in the front may get glimpses out from their elevated position, but along, you know, Adams Road and then sort of even Go Farm Road, the visibility is super limited because of the topography change there, and really, your view angle cuts off, and you can't really see out. And then we hiked up to the top of Bald Mountain and addressed the potential visibility there as well.
And then they can see anything?
There's one spot where you get to the very top of Bald Mountain, there's one trail that goes out to the exposed ledge outcrop, and there is potential visibility in that one location.
Yeah, that's the nicest views up there.
Yeah.
I did look it up, folks, the max panel height was somewhere between fifteen and eighteen feet, depending on the final equipment selection.
Thank you.
See, once again, on these maps, because I'm having a hard time reading them, so I can't even read the rating on this. So I think you have an environmental specialist here, can you tell me what kind of soil types are here? Because I can't, I see there's names listed of soils, but I can't read them. Can you tell me where the soils need to be at?
So there is a soil summary table that's provided on the natural resources map graphic, which is in the project petition. I've got a black-and-white copy here.
Got soil map?
It has the NRCS Soil Series information on it. The soils within the majority of the project area are Sudbury, Fine Sandy Looms.
Is that the only soil type?
Uh, no, no, there's several soil types. There's Hinkley, gravelly, lummy fine sand, Sudbury's, Walpole, sandy loam, Windsor lummy sand, ripper balm, fine sandy loam, Farmington Galway Galway complex, Deerfield lummy fine sand, Castile gravelly, fine sandy loam.
These are all where the panels are going to be?
I'm sorry, these are within our study.
I'm asking where the panels are.
Just where the panels are, yeah.
Yeah, it's limited to about three, I believe. It's, like Adam said, it's mostly the Sudbury fine sandy loam. There is a few panels on the Castile gravelly fine sandy loam, and a small sliver on the Deerfield lummy fine sand. I think that's it.
Does that have the soil maps on it?
It does, yeah.
Could I see it, please? So...
This one is the black and white, there's a colored copy that was filed with...
Yeah, the black and white's the standard in the Rutland Book. So a couple of those you named were statewide, but a couple of those are prime ag, aren't they?
Yep.
Sudbury's prime ag.
Yeah. That table lists which classifications they are as well.
This isn't really a soil map.
Yeah, in the petition, there's a, Andrew can speak to this on screen, too, but in the petition, there's a separate standalone primag soils assessment that's been done for the project. So I don't know, Andrew, if you want us to describe that?
Yeah, in the quick overview, is that the project has agreed to follow the Agency of Ag's procedures, Act 250 procedures for reclamation of primag soils. So there's certain things that are going to be done during construction, like replacing soil horizons back in the ground in the order that they come out for trenching and things like that. We have primag soil stockpiles located on the site, so that material that is getting removed and not putting back, getting put back during construction is stockpiled there and then replaced at decommissioning. So our general assessment is that, yes, there are primag soils on this site, but their impacts are mitigated once the project is decommissioned.
So the majority of the piece in Area 3 is primag, correct? From what I can see on your map?
Correct.
And it looks like maybe half, a little better than half, on Area 2 is primag, correct?
Which one are you referring to as Area 2?
I don't know, it says it's your Area 2 on the map, so I don't know what you're talking about.
Yeah, sorry, I can't see where I'm looking.
So this is a twenty-acre parcel, I, it's hard to see where the...
Yeah, that was, I didn't bring that for, for you guys to look at, it was more for my reference, but, yeah, the petition material actually has the full color map, it'd be better to look at. So I think the areas 1, 2, 3 you're referring to are probably the grassland bird survey units, so that's probably why you don't, you're not familiar with the Andrews.
I don't know, probably overlap. Where the panels are going, oh, there they go, I'll just do it this way. So it would appear by your map that... Is it fair to say that, I don't know, it's hard to tell, two-thirds is primag? I'm trying to get an idea.
These questions are better for Andrew to, Andrew Mills to answer.
Oh, you know, I thought you were the environmental specialist.
The primag soils are sponsored, the expert witness sponsoring that, part of the testimony is Andrew Mills.
Yeah, that sounds about right. I'm opening up our document right now, I can tell you exactly how much impacts the project is proposing on what soil types, if you'd like. So we've got impacts from a little bit of temporary staging area, the trenching, of course, the small portions of access road, and then the equipment pads. We are looking at roughly forty-nine thousand square feet of potential impact in the Sudbury fine sandy loam, three hundred and twelve square feet, square feet in the Walpole sandy loam, and eight hundred and seventy-nine square feet in the Castile gravelly fine sandy loam. So total, roughly fifty thousand square feet, so about acre and a quarter. The reason it's low is because the, there's very limited earthwork associated with the project, we just have a couple of stubs of access road, and the equipment pads, and then the trenching is really the bulk of it, for the conduit.
So the primag, which is the Sudbury, is forty-nine thousand square feet, is that what you said?
Correct.
And the total square footage of this is?
Project?
Yeah.
I think we said eighteen acres, Christine, let's start there.
So eighteen acres is seven hundred and eighty-four thousand square feet.
So it's one acre of primag, that's it?
No, there's much more primag than that within the project area. The, we're not considering the installation of the panels themselves as impacts, they're driven posts.
Oh, yeah, well, it's going to be covering, it's going to be covering primag, yeah.
Correct, yes, for the duration of the project, the primag will not be in use, if that's your question.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out what portion of the land is primag that you're going to be putting the panels on, I guess that was my regional question, I'm trying to find out.
I think I have the total primag area on the parcel, I don't know if I have it within just that eighteen-acre section. There's fifty-six point eight acres of primag within our mapped study area.
So I guess, you know, the panels are going to be on, that's my only question I'm trying So is that an answer we can get back, Andrew, at some point?
Yeah, sure. I could probably measure it roughly right now.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I think, question we had down at Regional, and I still have, because I look on these maps, I look at the seventy-acre parcel or seventy-one-acre parcel, and then you say you're using around eighteen acres, which is, yeah, a little better than a quarter of it. Visually on this map, it looks like you're taking up a lot more than a quarter of the land. And I know we had that same discussion down at Rutland Regional, that maybe it's just an optical illusion, but it looks like you're using more than eighteen acres when you look at the map, as far as the amount of it that's being covered with solar panels versus the entire lot. I mean, it probably isn't, but it looks like it.
I didn't create the map, but I know that when we exercise the option for the easement agreement with the landowners, it's only for the amount of acreage that's on there, so it'll be about eighteen, so we're not permitted to use more than that.
It's a hard parcel to look at, you know.
Well, no, it is, it is, because you've got, you know, along the river, you've got a long skinny chunk which adds up acres fast, but still, it just, we all commented down there that it looked like it was taking up more than, you know, between a quarter and a third of it, it looked closer to half, but...
Is this considered in the hundred-year floodplain, or floodplain where the panels are going, or is it?
It's actually, the Zone A floodplain follows Furnace Road, and the panels go up to the edge of it, of the map floodplain.
Zone A is how often flood?
A hundred-year.
That's a hundred-year?
Yeah.
Not above that? Or you're above that hundred-year plain?
That's right. Yeah. There's a, with the panels, there's a, the limits of that floodplain were used to guide design, so the panels are outside of it, but there's, there's some real thin slivers of fence that just nick it. That's a very approximate FEMA map layer, but that's, that's the best we have, too.
Yeah, I know, there's kind of a terrace that goes down there.
Yeah, yeah.
So that is not considered floodplain, or is it?
The panels are outside the map floodplain.
So is this, like, maxing out the grid, like, if other neighbors wanted to put in some of their own panels in their backyards, is it affecting? How much can get on there?
It is a great question. Really, that's a question for the utilities, but my understanding is any time anyone wants to connect to the grid, they have to put in an interconnection application, and then the utility does their series of studies and says, yes, this is feasible now, or we need to do X amount of upgrades for X amount of dollars, and then it's feasible. So that's really all utility jurisdiction there, but, yeah, we went through that process, and they said, yes, this works.
Yeah. It's, my only other question is, how come these beautiful sites of farmland are chosen instead of places that are already kind of denigrated? Like, we have one going, like, I mean, Adams is also a gorgeous piece of... Like we have one going, like, I mean, Adams is also a gorgeous piece of property that's gonna not be gorgeous when that goes in. So, you know, first it's the one we have that's going in, you know, up the road, that's in a salvage yard, that makes a ton of sense.
Nobody sees that one.
Right, you know, and what's the other one on, on Parker, that's an old sand pit, right?
Yep.
So why we're, why we're taking so many acres of beautiful farmland continuously?
It's easy, right? You have land to work with.
Well, I think, and you know, I prefer to jump in, but I think when there are environmental concerns, you know, something like in ESA, an environmental site assessment checking, if there has been damage done to the soil or the groundwater, sometimes other pieces of denigrated land might have hazardous conditions that we cannot build on. So sometimes it makes the most sense to build in a place where
That's pristine, awesome.
Does anyone want to add?
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll add to that, you know, um, project size, I thi- I think dictates a lot of it, but once a, a property is known and studied, there's a lot of things that get, um, known about a property as more detailed work is done to understand natural resource constraints and setback constraints and and other things like that, so
Closeness to the grid and facilities that the utility has available.
Yeah, so when you, um, when you start looking at an individual property and, and putting all those constraints together, almost every property in, in our experience is, uh, has a challenge or some difficulty to siting on it. This, this site's, you know, not any different, um, each site has its own constraints, but there's a often very conflicting constraints too that need to be worked through, so.
How far away is the three phase in this site?
It's right there. They just put it on, Matt's already said, put on that one.
Where, oh, has it come down Furnace Brook?
Right along Furnace Brook.
Yeah. So it comes all the way down? Is that true? It comes down to the entrance?
I've only seen it with my balls, you can confirm that.
I'm not a electrical engineer, uh, I, I don't know, maybe Andrew knows there, um
I'm guessing it's coming down the access road on Furnace, that's the idea, but, correct?
Yeah, the
Or is it down?
That's what I'm asking, I don't know where it is.
The interconnection is, um, is on, at the end of the access road at Furnace, at Furnace Brook.
Okay.
So it's underground, um, of the existing access road to Furnace where, where it rises.
And it's gonna go underground along the access road?
Underground along the project access road, yeah.
It'll be underground.
Yeah.
So you brought up something I gotta ask, you're the same folks that are working on the Adams Road project, correct?
Yes.
Next era is, I personally
Okay, and are you also the ones that are doing the Davenport project up in Brandon, is that yours as well?
Next era, yes, that was the project you had mentioned, right? Davenport, yeah.
They certainly cited that as well, or they, they have an application to the PUC for that as well.
Is it appropriate to ask where we are at the Adams situation, since we're sitting in front of here talking about another one?
It's a fair question, unfortunately, I can't speak to that, I have not worked on that project, um, and we have different specialists.
So everybody here is not familiar with that, there's no one involved with it?
Well, I've, I've
Oh, you are, I know you are, I saw the
But, um, and the company is making its required filings fulfilling the conditions it has to fulfill to the public that are in, under the agreements it made with the various state agencies, that it has to complete before they can start construction.
Is that the same situation with the Marana, the Davenport project, are you involved with that too?
I'm not currently involved with that, I was involved with work before the PUC, but I don't know what the current status of their, um, of their filings with the state are on that project.
But we haven't begun construction in any of these projects?
Well, no, that's kind of why I'm asking, because
Isn't there another one proposed up on Corn Hill too, uh, in those meadows, what happened to that?
That's a different
That's a different company.
That's a different company.
Yeah, I just tried to
No, there's another proposal site up there.
I think the point is we have so many silver hills in Pittsburgh.
Well, there's another one right out of the center of town too, I mean, but I don't think it's, I don't think it's this company, that's why I wanted to ask.
Right.
Cause those two are
Adams Road and
I don't think they're solar.
No, so that's
I know.
I'm just wondering where we are, here we are, looking at another one, so
Yeah.
Okay, you know, five years.
Yeah, that's been a long time, hasn't it, the Brandon one?
That one for a while. I'm trying, they came to the board, it had to be at least five years ago. Cause it was called, it was a different name then.
But this is what I know, but it's a different name. So I guess
Well, I know, next era owns it now, but it was owned by a different company then, I remember when they came to the board and
Oh, it's a different
And then next era, I had turned into next era somewhere through the process.
Okay, so
Along those lines, projected build date of this project, assuming you get all permits, et cetera?
Uh, twenty twenty-four, we had been optimistically hoping for twenty twenty-three, but
That's, that's quite quickly disappearing.
Exactly, yeah, yeah, and there are just so many factors outside of our control, you know, like you're working with utilities and whatnot, so the latest is twenty twenty-four.
It was Ranger Solar. Davenport was Ranger Solar, owned by Ranger Solar, when they first showed up.
I did look it up, the full array is on Primag soils, to answer your question.
So all of the panels are on Primag?
The eighteen acres, yep.
You can't build, don't stick anything on Primag in Act 250, okay?
This is two forty-eight, no.
I know, that's the way it is.
You had a, a chance, you had a, a get together for the adjoining landowners to visit the site, that's what you said?
Yes, there's a formal planning schedule for next week.
Can you tell me whether you've got a favorable response from the majority of the adjoining landowners, or is that not to be, to get to me?
I didn't, I haven't been having that dialogue, I know Christine has had some dialogue with some of the landowners.
I don't know if there are privacy concerns about sharing other landowners.
Okay.
Um, I know that
Just talk high level generally.
Yeah, so I wasn't on this project from the beginning, I recently joined the team, but what I had heard before was that other members of the team, other developers had had very positive interactions with multiple neighboring landowners, and then we just recently, with the PUC hearing that happened in February, heard for the first time from these two neighbors, Mr. Carrera and Mr. Billings, and then Mr. Carrera had not seen the full site plans and didn't know that, even though, yes, he did have visibility of the project from the north, we had proposed a whole vegetative buffer, and so he said, well, we met him personally, oh, but, basically, he didn't have any more concerns. So it was just this one remaining landowner who had questions, and so we are in communication with him about how to, uh, address that.
The answer is we've been talking to the landowners, we certainly had our
I hate to show something down on adjoining landowners.
Correct.
Pretty bitter, along with that.
Is there any projected battery storage in this facility?
Not at present, right, you haven't heard that? Okay, yeah, then no.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
If you all have further questions too, please do. If you're happy to have your questions answered informally, not necessarily, you know, whether it's inside or outside the PUC process, if you've got questions, get in touch with us directly.
Are you the spokesperson for the company in that regard?
Um, I am the attorney of record in the case at the PUC, so as, so folks have the opportunity always to contact me and I will put in touch directly with the knowledgeable folks on the project team who can answer the questions directly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good night. Yeah, when you send me that, whatever thing, I'll just order it all then anyway.
All right, so, uh, water and sewer commission discussion.
So, um, Anna and I have been talking about this a little bit, and I was wondering too, like, why the water and sewer commission is separate from folks that sit in this room as a select board? It seems like it creates another meeting, and I know like the last one they, was, was, um, canceled.
It was.
And I think coming with, with, plus anything they do, if there's approvals and it needs money, it has to come to the select board anyway. And with these pending Route Seven projects, you know, there's going to be times with
Five dollars in the jar.
At least you didn't do it during their present pace.
Smoke us all up. Um, I think with, with, you know, the upcoming water and sewer stuff that we're gonna see with the Route Seven projects, that would definitely save time if we're just coming to this board meeting with water, or having a water and sewer commissioners meeting like right after select board or whatever, however it's done, um, then we're kind of skipping the middleman on that.
We used to do it this way.
Oh, really?
Yeah, but the board used to been, how many years ago we switched that off, Joe, you remember?
Yeah.
That's ten dollars for that.
Don't hold us a whole little log, see if we're quick.
I think two thirds of the water boards in here tonight, right?
Well, yeah. Those are.
Well, now it's half.
Yeah, that's right, we're half, we're half the board.
I know, it was still one.
Or
No, uh
I think Baird's
And Baird's alone?
Baird and, uh, Ernie, Ernie Clark and Baird Morgan.
And you?
And me, and Ellen. Yeah. I don't know why they just don't come back to this board, to be honest with you, there's
Well, I mean, given the fact that we're having so much trouble finding people to serve on boards, you know?
Exactly.
It may be, you know, and in ten years, the pendulum may swing and you've got people that wanna do it.
Then fine, but right now we can't even find anybody that wants to fill the vacancy.
Right, I think it's one of those things too, where it's sort of on an as needed basis, you know, if not that sewer, water commissioners meetings
Don't need a meeting, every meeting, no, we can meet once a month or once every other month, to be honest with you. You take here all the forms and stuff anyways.
Yeah, Sean's right on top of that too, you know, so, um, but I just, I think it just saves a meeting and saves staff.
Yeah.
So you think Baird and Ernie would be okay with it?
I, I
Yeah.
I don't know about Baird, I think Ernie definitely
Well, yeah, I gather Ernie didn't particularly care to be
No.
in front of the whole town, yeah.
So
Well, he could always participate when we have it and come in.
Oh, yeah.
Doesn't mean I can't
Part of it.
Right. In the audience, but it's kind of, that, that's up to select board, I think, if you want to have that or not, it's sort of a pleasure.
Now, do you get any public that comes to your meetings much, other than when sewer rates go up?
Yeah.
Occasionally.
Occasionally there's people that come.
Not very
It's almost like
About like that, what we get?
Yeah, unless it was a, uh, subject, then they go.
Well, I think there's probably a lot of situations where we could deal with it, you know, Sean and I too, that doesn't have to make it to the board, so
Yeah.
I think there's gonna be lots of questions with, when these, I know there were folks calling because Otter Creek was out marking, like hydrants and things and so, you know, that's easier, that's easy for us to answer, cause Sean and I talk pretty much every day, so
Yeah, yeah.
I'm dealing with that then.
So do we need a motion to
I think this change, or
Is that all we need?
Yeah, I think you do.
Yeah.
Yeah, you need a motion.
Okay.
I'll, I'll make that motion that we, uh, while you'd be dissolving the current sewer and water board and it'll be taken over by the select board due to the fact that it's hard to get people to be on that board. Not for any other reason, but that's, I'll second that.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
You're off one, you're off one board, Tom.
Now you're back on.
All right, trustees of public funds discussion.
I think Tom had brought this to us.
Yeah, it's only there, I had a, an email, I think you all had it tonight.
Yeah.
And I had told the gentleman that, uh, this part of it, it's not in, in writing, but I had a phone conversation with him. They were, you know, what they're requesting funds for, and I told him that to request funds, it has to come from the Out of Valley School Board, not from an organization like this, as far as the trustees would consider it, because it has to be a, a formal request, then it has to come to this board. It has to be an endless vote from the Out of Valley Board, which I, consists of three members, which are from Pittsburgh, the alternate maybe, and it has to be an endless vote from this board, about five members. So it, really, the process, didn't do it right, so I told him, you know, need to go to that board and then come to us. So, I just wanted to make you aware of it, but, uh, they're requesting some funds for your project up there.
Well, it's just a study of the project, it's not even the project.
Not even the project, so, I, I think the trustees felt that, at least the ones, well, all three trustees said that we didn't feel this was appropriate for spending that money on, on a study.
Right.
If it was doing something, maybe that's something different, but, uh, for a study, I think it would probably turn that
But it didn't even come to us in the right form.
So I didn't come to the right forum, I just wanted to make you
Didn't even really get discussed, so, yeah.
Also, did I, did I mention, does everybody know that the school board finally is meeting on Tuesdays instead of Wednesdays, so we can actually go if we want to?
Oh, didn't know that.
Cause the new superintendent has, uh, obligations on Wednesday, so we can actually go to the school board meetings if we want to.
While we're on that that vote was pretty close, wasn't it, on the
Yes.
The budget, yeah, it was really close.
It was like fifty-five, I think, was the
Something like that, yeah.
It was a pretty little voter turnout too for this, it was a fourteen hundred voters or something, I think, for that, but it was very close.
Did I understand it was a fair amount of throwaways on votes too?
Um, there were ones that had to be counted that didn't read in the machine, so I don't know what there were for spoiled ballots.
Discarded, I heard.
Yeah, there, there were quite a few, but not, I'm surprised someone didn't ask for a refill.
Well, did you call the Secretary of State, we talked about that?
I called, well, I asked, I asked Sue Gage, who kind of, you know, cause Brandon gets all of the district stuff together, so um, I'm trying to remember what she said, it seemed like there were seventy that they had to like, you know, go through at the table, I, yeah.
So there was no response from the Secretaries, they don't know.
I didn't even know about that.
Yeah, it was really close.
My understanding was it was within fifty and it was
The school just said it was too close for comfort.
Wow.
I'm there and
It's getting closer every year, actually.
So there wasn't a high level of discarded votes, there was a
No.
High level of recount?
There's some that made marks on the ballots or little things that would throw it out of the machine
Oh.
for hand count.
So just for a point, I, I was approached by a few citizens, said they were confused by how that question was asked on the ballot, and, and it was for me too.
It was confusing.
There was a spot, it almost looked like you were supposed to circle.
Right.
And then there was a dot on the other side, and I had a couple, especially a couple older people told me they didn't really know what to do.
Now, the school does their own ballot, it's not done through
It's very different from what's on the regular ballots.
Well, I think there, I think somehow that's gonna become uniform, exactly how the rest of the ballot is.
I agree.
There were enough people confused and it caught my attention.
Yeah.
And I don't know how we go about that, Dave, but that somehow should be, should be all the same, it shouldn't be varying when you get into that.
I, I, I think that's a tough one, because we're really not affiliated with the schools anymore and going to the school board meetings would be the only way to do it, and I, I know what you're saying about the ballot.
State seems to control everything, I don't know why they can't do that the same.
It was a kind of misleading ballot.
How do we at least put that up for something to think about, it should be the same.
Don't they, Ellen, you give all your directions from the state of Vermont, how to, how to do your balloting.
Secretary of State's offices in charge of all the elections.
Maybe that's a place to start.
So that's probably a good place to
They didn't call you back?
No, not on that one, we were talking, what were we talking, what were we talking to the Secretary of State about, I'm telling him, go, was it appropriations? I think it was, yeah.
It was appropriations.
So they didn't call us back on the close
I, I'm trying to even think if I called him on that one, I think I just talked to Sue, cause she was the district person for the ballots.
You didn't call
We can call them if we want, see what they say. We can call him if we want, see what they say, but no one's filed a petition for a revo, a recount, so. Yeah, you'd have to, you know, again, it's like an appropriation, has to be a certain amount of voters to do it, so.
Well, I think we need at least ask a question about the consistency of the ballot, at least for what has been asked, asked to me. Because there was an issue with how that was set up. I don't know who can do that, but I think.
Helen's writing way crazy over there.
Please ask the question, to see if it can be a little more uniform, is that, I mean, you're that close, and people are having trouble with that, it's concerning, so.
That'd look very different.
Anyway, I'm sorry.
I heard school board.
That'll fire up the conversation. All right. Okay, so we have three financial policies to review. Trustees of public funds, investment policy, fraud prevention policy, and investment policy.
Yep, so these are the first three that we've been working on, and Helen and Anne and I both went over all of these. These are some, I think these were ones that were listed in the draft audit that the town should have for financial policies anyway.
Okay.
Again, these are, like I'm going to say it, like a broken record, but these are all VLCT model policies that we're using, so. And, yeah, so, you know, I guess we should probably figure out the process of how the board wants to move forward with the policies, if it's, you know, getting your packets in five days before the meeting is enough time to do it, or if it's a discussion, or, you know, how the board wants to go forward with getting your name. These are sort of boilerplate, the investment ones, it's pretty standard stuff.
I honestly want to read through these. I did not read through each policy. I didn't know we were going to be citing them.
Right, I, I think, I think getting them to us, like at this meeting, giving us till the next meeting to bring them up and vote on them, I think is what we need to do.
So I, can we do that with these and that appropriations policy too?
Yeah.
That was, okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's what I figured, if you guys have time to do it, then you can mail it over, call us, and talk to any of us about it, and, you know, that's fair.
Yeah, that gives us time to think about them.
Yeah, but we, we've been, we've been really trying to, I know that Anne was doing some of this stuff before too, but we really want to try to get everything up to date with policies, you know, it's just better for us.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so we have lawn mowing bid results.
Yep, so there were, in your package, you see there were, there were two, two bids that came in. One was significantly less with Ferns Brook Landscaping.
Yeah, but it lists a lot less. You know what I mean? That's what I thought too. I was like, oh, this makes sense, but it doesn't say that it's doing all the, like the Traffic Island, which is what I picked up. Muda's Green, the Pump State, you know.
They would have had to read the bid, the bid proposal.
So they just didn't bother to write it down, is all.
It's in the bid proposal.
We'll hold until it.
And this was dated correctly?
Um, how about four twenty-two, four twenty-three?
Is this we've been using? This is who we've had over here. We have some issues with stuff not getting done.
Well, according to.
According to Brenda. Just saying.
Well, there was an issue too.
Well, there were, but I'm not sure if that was.
The other issue from a couple meetings ago was the invoices weren't received in a timely manner, so it went into the next fiscal year. Yeah, so there was some stuff.
When you guys close out the fiscal year, there's, there's kind of a month or two where you're still getting prior year invoices though, right?
Yeah, but this was, it was a while, it was like six months, well, yes, it was like December or January. It was like.
Which, we could request the timeliness of the most on the.
So I think there is a little difference in them, on how, as Alicia pointed out. Just example, the trimming of shrubbery hedges, hundred is required, and then it's two hundred per season.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that total is not necessarily the total, because the trimming of shrubbery hedges is a hundred as required, so that number's gonna, not necessarily be just a hundred.
Right, but they aren't going to trim it more than once or twice a year, twice a year would be.
My point is, is I understand that they would have had to read it, but I would have been more comfortable if I actually saw it, you know, delineated.
And the spring and fall cleanup, only two hundred dollars, or is it two hundred for each? It's obviously a much more attractive bid.
Yeah, do we have a copy of what was sent out for the contract?
I don't have one. I think this one out, but. As far as I got here too.
Yeah, I can certainly pull one though.
I'd like to table this for tonight.
I would too. I'd like to see them give more detail than what they're actually going to be doing and how much.
Well, I think this one's adequate. Yep, that, this one's adequate.
That one's all.
It's very detailed.
No, that's what I meant, just the other one, that's, yeah. I want to see it actually line items, you know?
I would think that if, whatever's written in the proposal is what they would have to agree to, because that's what they're bidding on.
Well, we got a difference. One is twenty-six weeks, the other is twenty-two weeks.
Twenty-two weeks.
So that's a whole month difference.
And that's a whole heck of a lot of money difference.
Well, it's a huge amount of money difference between the.
Well, yeah.
Two bids.
Which is, again, I'm kind of wondering, like, if they're not, if they understand the scope.
Well, they did it last year, so.
Yeah.
Did they get all the areas though, that were?
Well, it's hard to tell because of the.
Because I thought there was some issue, I thought that that wasn't.
Well, it was at the office, but I don't know if it was real, or if it was, or both. I don't know.
I think it was both, yeah. But for the most part, I think it was okay, you know?
Well, we can certainly follow up.
It certainly isn't worth the, how many thousand dollar difference here?
Well, it's, one's twice as much as the other.
Times two.
Times two, or almost. Yeah. Well, it is time, yeah, because it's five thousand, yeah, it's over times two.
Yeah.
So it's fifty-one hundred and over eleven thousand. Huge difference.
I think all I'd ask for is the bid resubmitted with the right date on it, so it still reflects.
Yeah, that, that would be helpful. Because that's, looks like his bid from two years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, it says that in, that it was noted, that his bid is from twenty twenty-one.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's just, I'm guessing it's the same. I'm guessing it's the same.
As long as they got, both have the same, then, yep. I make a motion, we, if you want to do it, or do you want to wait until next meeting? But it's up to you guys. I don't see a change.
I mean, that big a difference? I mean, even if he adds, it's still not going to get anywhere near as much as that other one, even if he has to add those four weeks.
If we were, if we were close, we'd go and get some things.
Yeah, if we're close.
I think we'd.
I'll make a motion, we award the lawn care bid to Ferns Brook Landscaping.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Did you want to put an amount in the minutes?
Yeah, put it in there for five thousand ninety dollars a year. I believe it's a two-year contract.
Oh, is it?
So I'm surprised, we only got two bidders. I mean, there's a lot more people than that mowing in Pittsburgh.
There's at least two more that used to bid, I'm surprised. Those other two used to have contracts.
Well, no, so Connor Galbo took over for Brad.
Oh, well, maybe.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Sergey Charbonneau, I'm surprised he didn't get it.
Yeah, Gragian, there's another one. There was a couple.
Oh, AMN?
Oh.
Yeah, they've bid on Merrill's. They had it, they've had it before.
We should have almost waited and just gotten more bids, but, anyway. Uh, RRPC mutual aid agreement.
So this is something that I'm sure that Pittsburgh has done every year with regional planning, that's just mutual aid for, in case things happen and towns, you know, towns work together for, if we need to send a loader to.
It's like highway.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's a lot like fire departments.
Yes.
So, um, this is just the one that they sent over for this new year, and, and I'll be attaching it into the folder with the local emergency management plan too, so we have it all together.
All right.
We're going to do that.
So we need a motion for that.
So move. We got a, a first and a second.
Okay, Kelly, you got authority, you know, let's figure it out.
Your twins are involved.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, loan agreement for that lead service line inventory loan.
So this is the state revolving loan fund. There's probably going to be some debt forgiveness on this, because they usually do.
Okay.
Um, and that's really all that, I mean, I could tell you about it. I mean, it's zero interest, so.
Yeah.
Um, and it's, it's required by the feds now to do it.
Yeah, okay. Do we need a motion to take onstead?
Yep.
Exactly, they're going to give us a hard time. We aren't going to say. Yeah.
All right, well, I make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, Vermont Digital quote for police laptops. I actually didn't, didn't see that, or I didn't look at that or something.
I can, you want my copy?
No, I just put in a, what do we got?
Oh, yeah, it's a much favorite.
I know. Maybe no one else has theirs either, so.
Well, it's here somewhere.
I got it.
Yeah, there you go.
Twenty-four fifty-seven times three, and two forty-nine times three through the office.
Okay, sure.
All right, it's a hundred and five dollars per hour plus travel for installation and.
So they need more computers, that's pretty much what we're doing.
Okay. Necessary, the old ones are done. Thank you.
This we worked with before.
That's where does all of our, all of our computer stuff here, so.
Easy motion.
Yep.
I, I move to accept the quote for the new police laptops.
Can I see that?
Do you want to include it or not?
Yeah. As written. We can figure it out.
So I got it.
I'll figure it out.
Just over my span.
Seventy-two hundred plus. About eight grand. Seventy-three, seventy-one?
Plus installation.
And who provided the quote?
Vermont Digital. There are.
So the quote, the quote would be for eight.
Eighteen.
Yep, plus installation.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, um, the communications district appointment of representatives, which we still only have one. Yes, no?
I don't know.
It's Tony Ferraro, right? And we're still looking for a second person? I saw in that email that he had sent that, but we don't have anyone to fill, I mean, so we have the form if we get, or do we have to fill it out for him as well? Is that, I guess maybe I misunderstood?
It looks like he's already on here, so we'll have to send it to him.
Okay.
So, so does anybody know where this cut is at? Because I'm reading that some of them around the state are actually getting internet put in already.
Yeah, I haven't heard a word. They have a lot of meetings.
I heard there's some big concerns with how this is being followed up on by these, these meetings and these groups. I just read that the other day.
Oh, yeah.
Some's getting done, and some's getting nowhere.
Well, yeah, some of them are putting lines up already.
I know that Fidam Faber's been starting to build outs in a lot of towns around here, so.
Well, they're here in Pittsburgh, they're right shy of my driveway.
I have it at my house, it's great.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, thanks, yeah, I don't have it out my way. But if I want to spend seventy thousand dollars, um, whatchamacallit, what's the internet provider around here?
Comcast?
Comcast will bring it to my house for seventy grand.
Nice.
What's your deal? So what's your internet?
Geez, I'm only tech.
My internet? Well, it's on my side, although, but that's, I get, I won't say what I get every month, but it's darned expensive. We had to get it when COVID hit, and my kids had to do stuff from school, because otherwise it's dial-up.
So who oversees this, this group? Because it's kind of a mystery, since it started?
Yeah, I don't actually know.
Well, I know it started with like the RPC, and then there were reps from pretty much every town, but I, I really don't know. I've, I've never really gotten involved with that too much, but we.
Because the money's there, right? It's more of how to get it.
Apparently. I know they did quite a few studies and stuff, but I.
Well, that's, remember they came to us, I forget how long ago, and they, and like they had it exactly listed, everybody in the Otter Creek District, what towns would have to pay what, and like ours, like ours was only going to be like, what, I think ten thousand dollars or something?
It wasn't much at all.
It wasn't bad to get stuff up.
No, remember being like, oh, this is great, and then.
Nothing happened.
I haven't heard anything from them since, I'm not sure.
I think we probably should, because it seems to me that if it's, if it gets all spent somewhere else before they get around to making up their mind what they're going to want to do.
I'm just saying, I don't even think they have any money to, because they haven't come, like, we never gave them any money. Do you know what I mean? They, they had a financial plan, it seemed like, for all the towns.
I heard it was already allotted for this, it came out of the.
Well, I think the majority of it is, and each town had to kick in a little bit more to make it work.
Right, okay.
I think.
I didn't even hear that part. I heard this was mostly coming off of the funds.
But the fact that I'm hearing, and I forget where it was, was it Cornwall or someplace like that, they're putting it in for people and whatever, you know?
And I thought that one was going through there, the Addison County Regional Planning was where that, that most of that one came out of, so.
I think we have to reach out to regional.
Yeah, I'll call regional and see what's going on with that.
Yeah.
All right, personnel policy draft review.
So.
Was it different? I didn't really.
Well, so this, well, I, yes, so this is another VLCT model policy. Um, this is one bid I've used before. Um, this is just a draft, we start, just to start some things off for, I'm sure that this will be a working document for a little while. Um, a lot of this is, you know, the first few pages of stuff that you kind of have to have in there. But it kind of covers it all with hours of service and, you know, political activity and drug and alcohol use, and, um, so Anne's gone through this too, and we've looked at some things. I know we've talked about, kind of not really formally, but making some changes to sick time accrual and, um, when vacation actually can be used, because it was like, there was a probationary period where it couldn't be used, and how that was, and how , uh, vacation time was accrued too. Um, the other things that we haven't put in here yet that I, you know, we should probably talk or have a workshop on it or something is some of the, um, some of the stuff out of like the union contract, like on-call, call and pay, clothing allowance, it's just things that the town, you know, we should be doing anyway, regardless of a union, to get that in there. And then, um, yeah, everything else is a lot, well, I mean, those are the three things that I think we looked at that we were looking to make changes and see if the board was in favor of stuff like that, so. You can see like the vacation leave and the, and the way it accrues is on page, I don't know page number. Section twenty-one. Um, sick leave, that was one of them where we looked at, um, I think right now it's four hours per month, to do eight hours a month and have a max of two forty. It's just seen even since I've been here with, you know, people need to deal with, you know, their kids or anything, like, the sick time goes pretty quick, and, you know, if someone's sick for a week out of a year, their, their sick pay's done, and then they're, you know, then they're. then they're, it's done. I mean, if no one uses it, it's still the town's money. You can't, we don't pay it out at, you know, if someone's done, someone leaves, so... I think that would be, I think that would be a big, a big benefit to folks to have, know that they at least have it if they need to use it. And then, of course, if it, if it turns into a long-term thing, it would go into, you know, short-term or long-term disability anyway.
Yeah.
But, you know, even now with just coming out of, you know, a pandemic, we certainly don't want people coming in here if they're sick, but if they still have the ability to work, they can work remotely and, you know, so that wouldn't, they won't have to use sick time at that point, you know, as long as there's some productivity going on and it's, it's worked. So those are some things that we're just looking at that I think are worth discussing that we should have in here. And I think it would be good, too, as a, you know, to make this policy a good tool for, you know, recruiting people in, too, if we need new employees to see that, you know, outside of a union contract, the town is really looking at keeping good employees and treating them well, so... And it's, it's not a lot of money involved with doing some of these things, you know?
Yeah.
So, anyway, but, but that's one thing. I was hoping to get the on-call and the call and stuff and I just, we ran out of time, but I said, let's just get this in front of the board, so, you know, folks can look at it and see what everyone thinks. One other thing that we'd probably do is have a page like in the end where it would have sort of the breakdown of, you know, benefits, what insurance, how insurance is, you know, employee, employer, you know, just stuff like that where it's something that if it changes annually, we can just change a page instead of have to go through this whole document and change things, but then it's totally delta down on all that other stuff, so it's there.
All right, rules of procedure for review and approval.
Here's another one. Ann found this one, actually, and it's, I've heard her look at it. She's like a bulldog off of stuff now with policies. So it's sort of, you know, something that we probably should have on record on just how meetings are run and, you know, the way motions are made and what they mean and... It's actually a pretty good policy because, you know, it does, it does state that it is a, is a meeting to conduct business for the town and, you know, folks do have the ability to speak, but there certainly is a reason why we're all here.
There's a decorum.
Yeah, so I think this is a good one that we should have.
So we're going to be able to look through all these and then act on the next thing?
Yeah, let's see that.
I'd say so.
We have to read, yeah.
That'd be good. That would be good.
I'd kind of read through them.
I know, I'd read through it, but I didn't...
No, I think that's a good process if we bring it to you guys for one meeting and then, you know, have time to mull it over, questions or whatever.
Yeah, that way you don't get blindsided and all of a sudden, oh, geez, well, maybe I would have won.
Yeah, right, right.
Or maybe we should have added that or whatever, or not put that in.
I would have another set of eyes on things in case, you know, there's the wrong town name in there or something.
All right, local emergency, oh, jeez, local emergency management plan, municipal adoption approval.
So this is required every year. Actually, I drafted this and Tim and I got together and I sent it to him. He's looked over it. You know, it's the usual stuff, just making sure we have the proper contacts and, and stuff in here for the adoption, for the plan. The board has to approve it, then it has to go to RPC and...
I'd make a motion to approve it.
Second.
And a discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All righty then.
So another thing on the, on the emergency management, Tim and I were talking about, I know Steve is the, I think he's the EOC. On who was going to be representing us at the regional emergency management meetings. Tim didn't think he would be able to attend, even though they're only like four or five a year. I don't mind doing it, but I'd have to be like the alternate or something, so I...
Make motion, make you the alternate, how's that?
Okay, second.
Wait, does Steve, what about Steve? Does Steve want to go?
No, I don't.
Well, no, we made him the alternate.
Right.
So we have somebody that's able to go.
I see.
Easy open.
I don't mind. I told him I didn't mind doing it.
He liked it anyways.
I shared it forever when it started, so...
Okay.
That way you keep your...
Thanks.
Do we have, do we have a motion?
You have a motion.
Do you have a second?
Yeah, we twins.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We got a little...
Yes.
Yeah, well, you know, it's fun when the chairman's asleep.
That's right.
Or chairperson, excuse me, but yes, yes.
Anyways, that ends our portion of our meeting.
Yeah, she woke up.
Yeah.
Yep.
Do you have liquor board?
Liquor board.
Oh, liquor board.
Oh, we got it.
Oh, we love liquor.
Oh, goodness sake.
She's, she's...
All right, well, so, we have the liquor board. So approval of liquor license list from Helen.
Oh, so it's that, it's that whole?
It's that whole list? Okay, I saw that and I thought it was just, this is who we get it to, okay.
Mike and I have looked this over. Neither of us have heard any complaints on any of these on the list.
Okay.
So this, now, we give you the list to approve all of that work, so I have some that we don't want to approve. And then I go in and approve them online for the town.
Okay, so I, so who's DG REIT retail? Who's that?
West Dollar General.
West Dollar General. Wesco is...
She has...
She has play cards.
Okay, Roller Rooster, I know, RL Valley, Wesco, Gans, No Top, Rocker, okay, yeah.
But they're all with the...
It's two of them.
Yeah, we've all been with them, yeah.
But it doesn't have the actual place's name.
Yeah, I know.
They are.
No.
I'd make motion to approve it.
I'll second that.
Of course you will.
Okay, I'll rescind my second. No, 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 stop working, parking, get it in the public record.
God, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.